Mr. Williams, front and center, please. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, Almighty Creator of the universe. Please look down with grace upon the work these gentlemen are trying to do. Be at their bedside of the troubled, sick or in need, be of the body or the mind, and may this meeting be begun in peace, conducted in harmony, and ended in friendship. Amen.
Thank you, Danny.
Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
None.
Do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
And a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move along to the State of the County address. It's rather lengthy, but it's something we feel that we need to share with the county. This deals with information from January 1st, 2014, to December 31st, 2014. 2014 was a busy and productive year for the Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County. Last year marked the first year during the modern era that a primary election for our local and statewide offices was held in the month of June. Incumbent members of the Board of County Commissioners Creed V. Brody and William R. Valentine were re-elected to a second term on November 4th, 2014. Former county commissioner and board president Michael McCabe was elected to the vacant District 1C for the Maryland House of Delegates. The incumbent county commissioners were joined by Jacob Shade, who was sworn into office on December 18th, 2014. Some of our financial highlights. 2014 offered some hints that the national and state economies continue to lag from the longstanding effects of the Great Recession. State of Maryland revenue forecasts reveal a projected $300 million shortfall for the remainder of fiscal year 2015. Excessive government regulation and tax increases adopted by the state during the past eight years continue to stifle economic growth here and across the state. The county will continue to adopt a conservative approach to fiscal matters because of the state projections and their impact upon county government. Repeating a common theme from previous years, the county continues to adapt to static public resources as we remain committed to delivering core local government services in an efficient manner. The number of employees under the auspices of the Board of County Commissioners is today 20% smaller than it was five years ago. The capabilities of the county's workforce have expanded, and we rely more and more on advances in technology to support a leaner, more efficient government organization. Consistent with Resolution 11-12, the county commissioners in 2014 reduced the real estate property tax by a tenth of a cent. The county commissioners worked very hard to pass and implement a balanced budget for fiscal year 2015. Similar to previous years, the process was a difficult one. It is also important to note that the county took official action last year to designate two years of teacher pension liability as part of the county's fund balance reserve. Our commitment to reduce the costs and size of the county government has been positively viewed by the Wall Street bond raiders. In 2014, Standard &amp; Poor's Rating Services notified the county that it had joined Moody's Investor Services in upgrading the county's bond rating to AA status. County's rating aided in the successful procurement of public bonds to finance the construction of the new Allegheny High School. The county's Department of Finance was successful in receiving the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This acknowledges the county's spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story. This is the 22nd consecutive year that this award was received and appropriately demonstrates our board's commitment to transparency. Some other notable achievements, there are several notable achievements to cite for 2014. The Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship funded by the county's share of slot machine, video lottery terminal, earnings at Rocky Gap Casino Resort was awarded to students at both Allegheny College of Maryland and Frostburg State University. Allegheny County residents of all ages in all career and professional occupational pursuits are benefiting from this scholarship administered by these institutions. In 2014, ACM awarded over 200 Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarships to Allegheny County residents and Frostburg University over 100. The 2014 Allegheny County Comprehensive Plan was formally accepted by the Allegheny County Planning and Zoning Commission in May. Board of County Commissioners wishes to take this opportunity to commend the volunteer members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for their tireless efforts in completing this multi-year planning exercise. It is important to note that Allegheny County was a contributing partner in the Appalachian Mountain Innovative Readiness Training, a 10-day free healthcare clinic held this past summer at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds. This provided medical, dental, and vision care, including free prescription and eyeglasses, to individuals, and veterinary care for dogs and cats. This free care was provided to individuals of all income levels. The Department of Emergency Services continues to be responsible for the county coordination of preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation of man-made and natural disasters. The Bowling Green and Crescent Town communities endured a catastrophic flooding event last year. We appreciate the assistance of the Maryland State Highway Administration in their efforts to complete a comprehensive analysis of the drainage issues in this area. Community access and participation. Your county is committed to open and transparent government. Public business meetings continue to be provided via the webcast and a report to be viewed later on YouTube. The county held a number of public budget workshops and public hearings for budget requests. We also held other public meetings pertaining to specific issues such as water and sewer projects. In 2014, the county continued its tradition of taking public business meetings on the road. In 2014, we visited Old Town residents at the Volunteer Fire Department. Furthermore, one of the county commissioners regularly attended public meetings of all seven municipalities: Barton, Cumberland, Frostburg, Lunaca County, Luke, Midland, and Westernport. Departments in the spotlight. This year, the county wishes to highlight key accomplishments of the county's Department of Public Works and the Department of Economic and Community Development. The development of public works continues to address infrastructure improvements. Major water improvements included a new county-maintained system in Mount Savage in the second phase of a new system for the Rawlings area. 80% of Allegheny County residents have access to public water. Major sewer improvement projects were completed in Mount Savage, Highland Estates, Eckert, and Console. The county maintains 550 miles of public right-of-way. In 2014, the county completed 50 miles of chip and seal surfacing and new asphalt overlay projects for New School Road, Nemecollin Avenue, and Sunset View. A unique and innovative project was completed with the construction of the new Potomac Hollow Bridge. All totaled, Allegheny County owns and maintains 140 bridges and was the only county in the state to receive federal funding through the Innovative Bridge Research and Deployment Program. A notable project that will benefit our community for many years was the completion of a new sheriff's office at the Allegheny County Office Complex on Kelly Road in Cumberland. Allegheny County Maintenance Division employees installed all the systems and completed the interior of the building. Land was also cleared for a future firearms training center at the Public Safety Building on PPG Road. Other significant projects included South Cumberland Public Library roof installation, Braddock Run stream restoration, a new water line installation to the Allegheny County Fairgrounds, and a parking lot project in Mount Savage completed in partnership with the Maryland State Highway Administration. Allegheny County Government continues to administer a comprehensive residential and commercial recycling program and achieved a 34% recycling rate, substantially exceeding the 20% mandated state rate. 70,902,000 pounds of materials were recycled, and 4,808,000 pounds of natural debris were composted in the most recent reportable year. The Department of Public Works will continue to focus on water and sewer infrastructure projects in 2015. The department will be overseeing the construction of a new shell building at Barton Business Park, improving the South Cumberland Public Library and the Allegheny College of Maryland Technologies Building, enhancing access to the Great Allegheny Passage at Valley Street, and completing the new firearms training center. It was also a productive year for the county's Department of Economic Community Development. As recently announced, Webster &amp; Store, a Lancaster, Pennsylvania-based company, will open a warehouse and distribution center in the North Branch Industrial Park. The company purchased a 525,000-square-foot former Kelly Springfield warehouse there and plans to hire 150 employees over the next 12 months. Rocky Gap Casino Resort is now in its second year of operation under the ownership of Lakes Entertainment Incorporated, Minnetoka, Minnesota. It has become a year-round destination and employs 500 full and part-time individuals throughout the year. Both American Woodmark Corporation and Hunter Douglas Fabrication have grown since opening facilities in Allegheny County. American Woodmark came to Allegheny County in 2004 and now has 500 employees. Hunter Douglas began operations here in the 1990s and now has 860 employees and is the county's largest manufacturing sector employer. Broadband was expanded in the county in 2014. The county's Department of Economic Community Development worked with the state's Department of Information Technology and the Maryland Broadband Cooperative to extend fiber along Route 220 south to the Barton Business Park. This project provided fiber to Bel Air Elementary School while enhancing the marketability of the Barton Business Park and gives broadband options to other nearby employers. Appalachian Regional Commission funding was secured to construct an access road to a 20-plus-acre site in the Frostburg Business Park. Upon completion, this project is expected to create new business development and employment for the light manufacturing sector. The county continues to expand its efforts to collaborate with Frostburg State University by housing the State of Maryland's Western Region Small Business Development Center at the Department of Economic and Community Development's offices in Cumberland. This partnership produced noteworthy results last year with an infusion of $10 million new dollars that resulted in the creation and retention of 80 jobs. 500 consulting hours were also provided, and 48 unique clients received business counseling services. The Tri-County Council of Western Maryland continues to work with the Department of Economic and Community Development and the Small Business Development Center to promote small business assistance and development through its revolving loan fund. In addition, department staff continues to provide commercial development assistance, and this effort has resulted in a large increase in commercial development, particularly in Laval. Presently, there is a planned 50,000-square-foot shopping center development scheduled for 2015 opening in the Winchester Road Corridor and a new Holiday Inn Express under construction on National Highway. Both of these projects have been the direct result of DECD staff working collaboratively with other economic development agencies to promote commercial, small business development. The Board of County Commissioners took formal action to authorize the design for the construction of a new shell building in the Barton Business Park. The construction of this 40,000-square-foot building will provide the county with an essential industrial building to market to advanced manufacturing firms. This project, done in partnership with the state, is part of the county's mission to provide needed facilities to prospective businesses, particularly in the light advanced manufacturing sector. In conclusion, as we proceed forward in 2015, the county commissioners wish to affirm and emphasize our commitment and availability to all citizens and stakeholders. We appreciate your participation, value your viewpoints, and thank you for your ongoing support and your interest in Allegheny County Government. Our board also wants to recognize the contributions of county staff throughout the past year. Our board wishes one and all a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Very good, Commissioner.
I learned to read at Fort Hill. And speaking of Fort Hill, we have some people here to come up and talk about a certain football team that has got a totally unbelievable record. Gentlemen, would you like to come forth and say a few words before we give you your presentations? Coach?
Mr. Carter doesn't have anything to do with this group, but he got to enjoy the ride this year. Being an interim principal at Fort Hill High and being able to watch these young men and Coach Apple and his staff do what they did, not only this year but last year, is a tremendous feat. Anyone who's ever coached knows that no matter what level you play at, when you go 20 games in a row, then you must be doing something right. Coach Apple does a tremendous job. The kids are really, really good kids, and what's even better is the season's over and I haven't seen them in our offices. So not only are they great football players, they're good kids, and that's what's important.
Well, bring your team members up front here, and we'd like to give you a little bit of a special award.
Coach, could you introduce your players for us, please?
Yeah, please.
The email said you had to speak in the microphone?
Yeah.
Come on. We have three kids or four kids here that have played three years on varsity. Over there on the far end is our quarterback slash nose guard. That's Rashawn Shives, who did a tremendous job this year, 14-0 as a quarterback, never lost a game as a starting quarterback at Fort Hill High School. Awesome. Right beside him is his brother, Ryan Shives, who was a tight end for us this year and also played defensive line. The first time that they ever connected on a touchdown pass was in the state championship game. And actually, Ryan wasn't supposed to go out for the route, but he found his way out in the route and scored a touchdown. That is true. And then right beside Ryan is, you guys probably heard of him, is Ty Johnson. And I always explain Ty as this, that as good as a football player is and as much notoriety as he gets, notoriety that he gets, he's a better person. He's an awesome kid. Handles himself really well with all the stuff that comes at him around here. He's a tremendous kid. Beside him is one of our emotional leaders, was unable to play an entire season his senior year, Ryan Smith, who played fullback for us in the state championship game last year. He was a big key part of last year's state championship game, but early in the season, tore his ACL. But he was always there, never missed practice, and supported these guys. And I heard gave a great pregame speech to those guys that made them, you could see them coming out of the locker room, they were totally emotional. So glad that I had a chance, an opportunity to coach these guys. They do a tremendous job, and you're not a good coach unless you have good players. And they are tremendous players, and they work extremely hard, and like Mr. Carter said, they're better people. And I've never really documented that, but I guess they haven't been in the office since football's been over. There's 27 seniors this year. We're losing 27. These are four out of the seven that have played varsity football since they've been sophomores. And hopefully, their leadership, from what they've learned in the past, will help the guys coming up next year in the future. Thank you, guys, for having us, and I guess it's time for us to take a picture.
Yes, sir. Gentlemen, come on up.
Real quick, let me introduce Mr. Paul Green, who is our athletic director, who is retiring at the end of the year, so he's going out in style.
I do want to say one thing. Not to put any, I want to thank the commissioners for honoring this team. This team is a, really was a team. And I don't want to put any pressure on Coach Apple, but we were here last year, we're here this year. I want you to pencil in the date next year for this team, too, okay?
We've already got a citation ready. Anyone fifteen, you want to come over? This is an official citation for Fort Hill Sentinels. Reads Allegheny County Government official citation. Be it hereby known to all that the Board of Commissioners publicly recognizes and extends congratulations to the Fort Hill Sentinels football team. State class 1A championship, Maryland Public Secondary Schools Athletic Association, 2014 state football tournament. Undefeated season, 28-0. Totally amazing. Fourth state and second consecutive state football title, Baltimore, Maryland, December 7th, 2014. Allegheny County Commissioners' Public Business Meeting, January 15th, 2015. Disassigned by all three county commissioners, myself, William Valentine, Commissioner Creed Brody, Commissioner Jake Shade. Congratulations again.
Thank you. You are a good reason.
If you could go slightly and turn sideways, because big shoulders to get in this.
Yeah, our profile is so much better.
And move as close to one another as you can.
No matter how square.
Thank you.
If you could just move that out.
Commissioner Shade, an Allegheny guy, just offered a challenge to the Fort Hill team. We'll see how this works out next year.
Go easy on them next year, please.
Oh, I thought maybe you was challenging them to a game of football.
Well, we have five, and I think they had five, so that would be...
They win.
Yeah.
You're only counting on the one guy still being on. Okay, next, we'd like to honor the Sandier Foundation, Probat Sandier, donor, Christmas card recycling, holiday cheer. Would you like to come up and say a few words, ma'am?
Actually, it is my honor to come and see all of you, but such a support, the whole community was behind that. Actually, my family started about four years ago, and Western Maryland Health System, Karen Johnson, Mr. Maroney from downtown Cumberland. Everybody was so supportive, they collected nearly about 10,000 cards for me.
Wow.
And the family was starting, and we started giving to the nursing homes, and to the veterans now, and to some of the patients in the hospital if we can. And it is spreading really, and I am glad the Board of Education have helped me now to take over the whole project. And I'm pretty sure with all the people together, we can always achieve our goal. None of my children or grandchildren now live here, but Allegheny County is my family. I have been here for 44 years, and every bit of it, I have enjoyed it. And the project was actually my grandchildren's idea, it was. And now, they are in Ohio, they will be starting in Ohio, some of them are going to start it in Washington, but we, Allegheny County, was the one who started it. We used to recycle bottles and all that, and when I came to this country, it touched me, I didn't feel like throwing the cars. Since then, that idea was there, and it had come a reality. I am glad, with the help of everybody, it is growing up, and the Board of Education is really putting their hands into it. And my biggest inspiration was Mrs. Mary Beth Pelosi. I have worked with her for years, and she have always been a big help to me whenever I have won a different project in the past I have done, and I am glad now it will be taken over by the schools, and whatever, we can help each other and be here. And mainly, it is for children to participate, and I have a lot of letters to show you how many nursing homes and all, they were really thrilled to have that. And it is a simple way to do it, but it's a time-consuming, but it is worth it. Thank you.
Well, it's a real honor to have you as an Allegheny County citizen, and it's an honor to have you here tonight, so please come forth.
Thank you.
Be it hereby known to all that the Board of Commissioners publicly recognizes and sincerely appreciates the Sandier Foundation and Probat Sandier. For the generous charitable contribution to fund the Christmas card recycling project, this community-minded effort of school-aged children encourages generational interaction, value, and respect, brings holiday cheer to Allegheny County's senior citizens, and showcases the concept of recycling. Allegheny County Commissioners' Public Business Meeting, January 15th, 2015, signed by all three county commissioners, William R. Valentine, Creed Brody, and Jake Shade. And we thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Terry, you've changed your hairstyle!
The bad news is Terry's under the weather, and you gotta listen to me. The good news is Terry had a chance to enlighten me, so I can let you know what's going on. I would like to thank Mrs. Sandier for doing this recycling that supports our county, so we thank you very much for that. We're gonna do an e-cycling event on January 24th, that's next Saturday, from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. here at the Penmar Recycling Center out back. It's funded by a state grant. We'll have $7,500 we're getting from the state, so it won't be a penny of county money in this. Actually, we actually pay for public works time, we'll have a couple of people out there, and they'll reimburse us for that over time. This is for county residents only. We will ask for IDs for your county resident. The money is received from, there's electronics manufacturers, they do a registration fee, they have to pay a fee when they do that, and that money comes from that, so it's not a tax, it's actually to the manufacturing companies. And the materials are actually, we work with JVS Environmental, they're out of Rockwood, Pennsylvania, and it's just not taken away and thrown away. There's pictures here of the site, actually, our solid waste board toward this, I think, last year, and they actually take the materials and they do recycle the materials, and they recycle all the electronics and put it back. And we would ask for the press help, both from the radio and the newspaper, if they would do whatever they could to advertise this. It's been around, I belong to the Elks, and we must have got it to them, because they sent out a newsletter, and they had this attached to it, so a number of the people on the board have been sending it, our solid waste board have been sending it out, so if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer, and I would like to move forward.
That sounds good to me.
All right, good deal.
Anybody that's got electronics you're thinking of getting rid of, this is your opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move into our action agenda. Mr. Dorsey?
As you may know, on December 10th, 2014, the Planning and Zoning Commission... As you may know, on December 10th of 2014, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve two text amendments requested by county staff. The first of these was a text be amended in County Code Section 360-106, regulating off-street parking standards, changing the minimum parking space size from 200 square feet to nine feet by 18 feet. County staff also requested that text be amended in Laval Zoning Part 3A, regulating automobile parking, changing the minimum parking size from 10 feet by 20 feet to nine by 18 feet. I can give you some background on this. It's become pretty obvious over the last several months that commercial developers are having some difficulty meeting County Code and Laval Code requirements on parking spaces. I looked into this, did some research, and found that parking standards of surrounding jurisdictions, the cities of Frederick, Hagerstown, Cumberland, and Frostburg, and the counties' Deep Creek Lake zoning of Washington and Frederick County, all support this nine by 18. It's a nine by 18 parking space. It's sort of like we're at a competitive disadvantage there. In fact, some of the towns go down as far as eight by 18 feet. We had three speakers testify in favor of the amendment. Jeff Barclay from Economic Development testified that he has seen that this is becoming a hardship for developers, especially in Laval where there's limited commercial land available, and these firms are actually redeveloping properties, so they're running into space problems. Jeff saw it as a pressing issue. We also had Mr. Ted Donald of Penn Tax Ventures that is developing the Winchester Court on Winchester Road, and he explained what his project was all about, but he looked into this thing on a national scale, saying that because of federal mileage standards, carts are shrinking, they'll continue shrinking to meet those mileage standards. And most of what he spoke about was the fact that a 10 by 20-foot parking space is unnecessarily using up land, and it's an extra cost for the developer that's passed on to his tenants, which then pass the cost on to their customers. And he just felt that, his big argument was that you could put more parking on less land, and everyone's a little better off. Angie Patterson, the Land Use and Planning Engineer for the county, she was happy that this was being proposed, because actually, stormwater management regulations that are passed down from the state require that we minimize the amount of impervious areas in developments. And what's happened, I guess, is that the County Code and Laval Code and our stormwater management regulations are in conflict, and the developers are sort of stuck in between, whereas if we insist on having what the code calls for a 200-square-foot spot, it's gonna make stormwater management more expensive and more, just a bigger project altogether. The new size is 162, yeah, 162 square feet. And lastly, the Potomac Conservancy did a study of the watershed, the Potomac watershed, and made some recommendations to all the counties in the watershed. And for Allegheny County, the one thing they said, just echoes what Angela said, that we should reduce the size of our parking spots down from 200 square feet to nine by 18. So, the planning commission has voted on this and recommend that you adopt this measure.
All right, Commissioners, do we have a motion to accept this recommendation?
Just for point of order, this is a code bill as it relates to the county, so today you're voting to introduce the bill. There'll be a hearing...
Two weeks.
Two weeks, and then you would actually pass it sometime there.
Next legislative after that.
It'll be February the 12th.
Okay. So moved, I'll make a motion, we introduce this.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next, we've... This is dangerous, we have to allow the attorney, Mr. Rudd, discuss the second item.
Oh, water tank, okay. As you may know, we're involved in a water project in Rawlings. One of the requirements is we have to acquire a site to put the water tank, and a site has been identified, an agreement has been negotiated, actually, it's a two-party agreement, we'll get into, basically, the property's owned by two entities, a trust and the state of Conda Smith Jr., and so the deal is we are buying approximately 0.57, seventh of an acre. Total price is 10,000, be divided equally between those two entities, and then we will use it to erect the water tank, and that's one of the requirements, and we're recommending that you authorize the entry into this transaction.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to accept this recommendation?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope, we need the tank.
We do. Sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, Mr. Roy Cole, talk about transportation.
Good evening, Commissioners. The first item has to do with accepting the capital grant that we've received for the current fiscal year. One thing I would like to point out, about a third of this grant is capital in terms of the granting agencies, but it's operating in terms of our budget. So, the federal government some time ago redefined capital to include all maintenance. So, our building and our vehicle maintenance down at Transit is now, in their eyes, capital. In our eyes, it's still operating. So, if somebody looks at these budget numbers, they have to know that, or it looks like they're committing more local funds to this grant than we really are. Just wanted to clarify that. This grant's, in terms of the main items for capital, it's three replacement buses, and an upgrading of the surveillance cameras, and the couple of replacement computers, along with some various shop equipment. This time, I would ask that the Commissioners okay signing of the grant agreement.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to accept this grant agreement?
I'll make a motion, we accept.
Do we have a second? I will second this. Do we have any discussion?
The good thing is, you get new computers, you know, where you can get rid of the old electronic stuff. Sir?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. And Mr. Cole again.
The next item is actually the starting point of what we just completed for next year. This is a resolution to allow the president of the Commissioners or the county administrator to apply for the capital and operating grants for FY 16. Just for information, particularly for our new commissioner, we go through this every year, even though the county has the authority to apply for these grants, part of the application itself needs to have the resolution in it, so that's why we do the resolution.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to accept Resolution 15- tip?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Thank you.
Ms. Sierra, you're up next.
Well, tis the transportation evening.
Yeah, this actually relates to the transit grants as well. This is an amendment to the Transportation Improvement Program for fiscal year 2014 through 2019, which is a list of short-term transportation projects. The Maryland Transit Administration asked us to make modifications to reconcile the tip with the Transit's current operating and capital grants, so this is just to make those two documents be in agreement. So, I'm requesting that you sign the resolution to revise the Transportation Improvement Program.
Do we have a motion to accept Resolution 15-?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
You're all done. Ms. DeBoer.
You don't have nothing on transportation, do you, sir?
Only if you're sick.
I guess you know before we get started, since it's always been customary that him and Mike was the eye candy, that he's standing alone tonight as the only eye candy in the room, so...
I appreciate that. Since he's no longer here, sitting on that board, I was the only real eye candy. Commissioners, what you have before you is acceptance of a state grant in the amount of $49,690, and that'll be applied toward the purchase of four cardiac monitors, which will be deployed by the local volunteer EMS companies in Allegheny County. That contract will be awarded for the purchase of four at $111,410, and that'll go to Physio Control in Salisbury, Maryland. The process that we started out here with is, it was time for these pieces of equipment to be replaced. They started out at an individual purchase price of $42,000 per unit, and by applying the grant and our purchasing mechanism, we've driven that cost down to $15,400 per department. And it should be noted that the departments are paying that $15,400 out of their own funds. So, our request is acceptance of the grant and authorized signing of the contract for the purchase.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to accept the state grant for cardiac monitors?
We'll make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
That's a good deal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, nobody up here's ever voted not to allow the state to give us money. I don't know why that is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did. On them trees, I don't want no trees.
Maybe they could just give us trees. Okay, item 10 is a lease purchase agreement. Tina Rafati?
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Allegheny County Animal Shelter Management Foundation to request the transfer of the Sheriff's Building on Furnace Street to the animal shelter. If approved, we plan to transfer our administrative offices, as well as our receptionists, down to the Sheriff's Building, which will free up much-needed space within the animal shelter. Our animal control offices will also move down to the Sheriff's Department as well, again, freeing up space and also providing for a separation from animal control from our adoption center. On the ground level of the building, we're going to outfit a veterinary clinic, as well as a small area designated to house clinic animals overnight when necessary. So, we appreciate your consideration of this request.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to move forward with this lease purchase agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You've got yourself a building.
Congratulations.
Much needed. Okay, Dave, would you like to go to consent agenda first?
Certainly, Commissioners, our consent agenda this afternoon consists of items 11 through 17. Item 11 is the authorization to declare seven properties now owned by the county to be declared surplus and to move forward with disposition. Item 12 is authorizing the purchase of three flood-prone properties in the process bid for subsequent demolition. Those properties are located on 11400 Valley Road, we have a property to acquire at 10901 Locust Grove Road, and 11826 Valley Road. Item 13 is to approve the issuance of a 2015 salvage yard license to Harold's Garage in Franklin. Item 14 is the authorization to advertise for a public hearing for our 2016 transportation program. Item 15 is a motion to adopt Resolution 15-1 to recognize a process to nominate a candidate for the position of county health officer. And item 16 is the acceptance of a trail grant awarded for the Division of Public Safety in the amount of $30,000 for equipment to support the maintenance of the Highlands Trail, and specifically, this grant will allow us to acquire a commercial mower, chainsaw, and a security system for the equipment garage adjacent to the Frostburg Trailhead. Last but not least, is the annual travel request authorization for our fair week staff, Commissioners.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dave, do you have anything else?
There's nothing further this evening, thank you.
Mr. Rudd, a second opportunity.
I have nothing.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Jake, would you have any statements or comments you'd like to make?
Sure, we went to Mako last week, the three commissioners and some county staff, and it was a great experience. It was my first Mako. Commissioner Valentine is on the Maryland Association of Counties, they're Board of Directors, they're leadership, and it was a very good experience. We went to different classes, I learned a lot about county jails and some economic development stuff. In addition, you know, Garrett County had a full new slate of commissioners, they had three new people come in, and so it was nice to get to know them, and I think we'll be working together in the future. Thank you.
Great.
Commissioner, I'd like to defer to after our public speaks, sir, if you don't mind.
You can defer anytime you want to.
Thank you.
For myself, like Jake said, we had a great time at Mako. This is a very important meeting, the whole event was structured around so many newly-elected officials, and it's a great way to help those new people come up to speed a lot faster. As Jake said, three new people in the Garrett County Commissioners positions, and being a neighboring county, it's important if we can all work together, and it's nice to get to know the people, become friends, and form a bond there. A lot of things happening in the county, hopefully, we'll have some good announcements over the next couple of weeks, so things are moving forward. Now, we have a few people signed up to speak. Please come up, you will have five minutes, state your name and your address, you'll have five minutes to speak, and if you're not finishing that, those five minutes, you'll get another five minutes after everybody else is finished speaking. First is Terry Shockley.
Of Graham Town in Frostburg. They'll run in Bedford Road Sanitary District. We did a huge study in 2008, and this is the third area we identified that needs to be improved, and that's the next area we want to shoot for in Bedford Road, Sanitary District. Locust Grove Pump Station, it was a pump station built in the 60s, we want to start thinking about replacing. North Ranch Waste Water Treatment Plant, Clarifier. Rawlings Sewer, which the community has expressed interest, this will be a huge undertaking, we're gonna try to do a study this winter and determine exactly what the cost would be. And the last one, Beer's Lane, what happened years ago, Beer's Lane was a kind of a test system, a wetland that didn't work very well. To fix that, what we did is we connected the septic tanks to the Barton Waste Water Treatment Plant, and because of the nature of that sewage coming from septic, it's causing us operational problems, so we'd like to try to get some funding to fix that, and get rid of the septic tanks and go directly into the wastewater plant. So, again, the plan ones are the kind of how, you know, we want your blessing to kind of try to move ahead and get funding. You got a smile on your face, do you have anything to say, Commissioners?
Yes, I'd like to add something to our future sewer projects, but we'll get on the next, the next frame here.
Okay, good deal. Future sewer projects, what we're doing was, we want to have, we know we're gonna have to deal with future projects in Radick Run Sanitary District, the Bedford Road Sanitary District, and the Jennings Run Willows Creek Sanitary District, they're all under consent orders to fix their systems. One of our public meetings five or six years ago, somebody said, "Why are you doing this now?" And the reason being, sewer systems were kind of overlooked 10, 15 years ago, because they were causing problems, but the EPA and the state wasn't after you for discharges. Now, we're under consent orders, so we don't have any choice. And all those systems were built either in the 60s or early 70s, so it's time they need repaired anyhow. But we are under consent order to fix those systems, and we've made, if you look at the last five years, we've made tremendous impact on the reduction of our overflows and also improvements to our system. Borden, Zelman, and Slab Town, those are areas that do not currently have sewers, we'd like to try to get sewage to at some point in the future, and Vale Summit's the same same way. The only other planned project we have, and this is on the radar screen because it is a, it's not a water sewer project, but MDE has a stream restoration program. This project would be done in conjunction with the Ordinance Road Bridge. If we replace that bridge, we'll have to do some restoration in that area, and we hope to get a grant to do that stream restoration.
We better get a grant to do that restoration.
Excuse me?
We better get one.
We better get one, because we can't afford it.
And that's it. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, hopefully, we can get your blessing, and this is what we'll try to present down at the...
Well, I do, Paul, because I noticed we've got several upgrades in the Jennings Run Sanitary District. And I was wondering if there was any way we could look into some type of feasibility study of the county putting a sewage treatment plant in the Locust Grove area to handle Frostburg, LaVale, and Jennings Run Sanitary District, because that's a, there's going to be a lot of money spent in all those areas under the consent order. So I think we could eliminate a lot of CSO problems if we would look at doing such.
With looking at our radar screen, you see, notice number four is Locust Grove, so that would be an opportunity to discuss that with the state and see what their opinion is on what the feasibility moving forward with that would be. So absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's really, really important, understanding some conversations that have happened in the city of Cumberland. So we probably need to work together if that's something that we can do, we need to work with that.
This would be a good starting point. Again, I'm proud of this meeting. Some pace is a good thing for us, but this pre-paced meetings for us have been so productive. Again, we've got so many projects. And what we did, we built relationships with these, with the funding agencies. We've proved to them that we can get the projects done in a timely manner. And there's a lot of details in projects. If you're done face-to-face meetings, we get a lot of work done, and I think you've seen that in the last two years.
Well, I think Denise McLeach always says that the best. She can't wait to come, because when you show up, you always have projects for her that are ready to go. And Cindy Stone has been the same way, so thank you for that, Paul.
The state and federal government can beat on a lot of times, but these agencies we deal with are top-notch people, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Paul, wait till they take the vote, then I need to ask you a question concerning Mount Savage.
Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the Board of County Commissioners to approve the agenda for the pre-paced county water and sewer meetings. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Before you get your question, Dave, what we'll do is, this is the agenda, what we do, if you recall, we'll do a project sheet on every project showing where we're at, where the funding's at, what the costs are, et cetera. So we do, for every project listed on that list, there will be a booklet we hand out to all the agencies. Yes, you have a question?
Okay, real quick, you know, we had the opportunity to discuss briefly at our meeting in Barton last month, the situation where we have with respect to those citizens who are still being served by the old country line down in Mount Savage. I'm just curious, you know, we've had multiple public meetings, multiple mailers, we went door-to-door, and I just wanted to, one more time, just reach out to our folks and kind of get an idea from you and Danny here, real quick. How many people have not switched over to the new system? Are we...
I don't know the exact number, but it must not be very many, because it hasn't been brought to my attention. So when it was taken to my guys, it was...
Keeping you in the dark.
They like to do that sometimes.
To answer your question, Dave, the country line from back in April till present time, from where you turn down the road and there, at the playground, at the school. When it got to where we were going to have to haul water out there again, we worked with Terry and with Paul and with Jimmy Taylor, who's been a guy sent to us, and Slick. And they shut the country line off right there at the school. We put a two-inch emergency line in down the street and ran Frostburg water over into our two-inch line there, to the vets, to the six, to the eight, and we shoved water to the school. So from there in, had been, those folks have been on Frostburg water feeding into that system. And from there out, there are about seven homes that were still feeding off the country line. I think all of them, but one, has already been cut in and is using Frostburg water to come back in from out the tank where the vet's tanking and feeds back. And I think there's only one out of there that's still on ours. Our goal with Jimmy was to, Christopher, was to by the end of January, be able to shut it down altogether. We can't do part of that for probably another two weeks till they get the other Frostburg piece out of the works out of Cali Hill. But they're feeding, they're feeding off the Frostburg water. And we had a problem at the Cali Hill system, and I felt accidentally getting those second time drained. We got shoreiers to come up and do some work there and re-hump it. And we're positioned now, we're rather than have to haul over there unless they dare something else up again, if need be, we can, we're positioned where we can shut Frostburg water that way to take care of it. Terry's doing an excellent job up there, and Wade, he's been great to work with, so it's coming along.
I'd like to thank Danny Williams, too. He's been a lot of help there. And the community of Mount Savage, if you've been down there, the disruption...
Well, see, Danny didn't know anything about this subject until last night. You know, he slept at a Holiday Inn Express, apparently, you know.
But the Mount Savage community's been wonderful to work with. The complaints and the disruption, the traffic, et cetera, have been very small. They're a good community to work with, so.
Well, they've greatly improved streets there now.
They did that.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Item number eight, Commissioners, is the accounting software proposal. Mr. Bennett?
Again, hello, again. Last time tonight, I promise.
So you're purchasing something from Quicken?
Yeah, something like that. Tonight, we're simply seeking your permission to go out and explore new tax and general ledger software. And to give you some background as to why we want to do that right now, right now, our current property tax billing software is 12-plus years old. It does service 38,000 accounts, and accounts for some $40 million to the county every year, so it's a pretty vital cog to us. Obviously, 12 years old for software is pretty old, so it's beginning to show its age. Our general ledger package, which handles essentially 110 to 120 million dollars worth of activity a year, is 20-plus years old. So we have software in-house that's certainly been very serviceable to us, but at this point, it's beginning to get towards its end. Due to staffing shortages that we have now, we've been able to kind of maintain our staffing, but since we've lost 40% of our staff over the last five years, it's difficult to maintain these packages. They require a lot of manpower to keep up with them. And also, the programmers behind the scenes are getting harder and harder to find. It's an old language, programming language, so it's difficult to find people who are even trained in it to assist us. So what we'd like to do is try to reallocate some of the monies we already have budgeted for maintaining our software and utilize that money to, one, we think save money on an annual basis, and, two, use the money that we're saving to hopefully help pay for a new package. Obviously, there's a cost to it. We don't know what that is yet, but we want the opportunity to try to find out. We think in getting a new package, it would significantly streamline our process in the finance office, and also would help out all of the operating departments, and also may have the ability to help out the citizens as far as the information we're able to put out there if it's available to them. So tonight, we're simply just looking for the chance to go out to RFP and analyze what comes back.
What's the timeframe of getting responses back in, Jason?
If we could hopefully go out in either January or early February, I'd like to get responses back in 30 to 60 days. And then, obviously, you can't pick one of these overnight. There'd be a lot of time spent analyzing the different packages and what they can do or can't do for us. So, you know, 30 to 60 days, probably, and getting bids in another few months and analyzing. Then we'll come back to you maybe sometime in the summer with an idea of what we could do.
Okay, well, what we would like to do is at least get the proposals in and make sure that we have enough information that we can make a formal recommendation to the Commissioners as part of our CIP plan, because this will not be an inexpensive proposition.
It will be, and you can see from, you know, having software that's 12-years-old, 20-plus-years-old, you make the investment in it and you have it. It's something that you'll have for years. Problem is, we're just to the point where we need to make another investment. So, yeah, not cheap. We will build it into the CIP this year. We'll do our best guess at an estimate for now and build it in and plan for it, and we'll figure out how we go from here.
Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the county staff to proceed with the request for a proposal to provide a new tax billing and general ledger package. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by...
Fit, boom. Easier said than done.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Commissioners. Thank you. Item number nine is the Hagerstown Community College Paramedic Students for Clinical Experience My brother from another mother, Mr. Richard Ford, Director of Department of Emergency Services. Good day, brother.
How are you, sir?
Fine, sir.
What you have before you, Commissioners, is an agreement with Hagerstown Community College. Area volunteers have options as to where they obtain their training in the paramedic program. Many of them have gone through the state-sponsored program that's offered in conjunction with your community college, and that provides them an opportunity to come out as a paramedic. However, we have had some students who have elected to explore the program with Hagerstown Community College, which provides them an associate arts degree in paramedic sciences when they're complete. As a part of that, we have students that actually reside in Allegheny County, attending this program, and have requested to come back to Allegheny County to do their clinical experience as part of this program. So the agreement calls for those students to be able to be partnered with our career paramedics in the field, and so our career folks will serve as preceptors to them, allowing them to get their clinical experience in, which is part of the requirement for them to sit for the National Registry Paramedic Exam.
Very good.
That's good stuff. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the Board of County Commissioners to approve and sign this agreement.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Cannot use the water. Most of the time, I am the one who does this, because my mother is not able and our husbands have to work. In the beginning, with the first petition, lots of people wanted the water. But when the Bearville Water Committee did not like the outcome was, they distributed letters with information. They did not give correct information. I have provided you with the letter that was distributed. This was misleading to a lot of people. Now our concern is with the voting that was done. There was 25 votes for the water, 17 no votes, and 16 did not reply, making a total of 58 votes. We have only counted 50 houses in the area that should have voted. We would like to request a copy of the mailing list that we used to send out these letters. There are three houses to be torn down that is going to be purchased by the state for a new bridge. Four homes are vacant. Several are owned by voters who do not reside locally. Did they all receive a ballot? A lot of elderly that may not have sent their letter back. We do not think it's fair to count votes that were not sent in. In any election, you only count the votes that are turned in. If you do not vote, it is not counted. If this was the case in this election, we would have the majority of people voting for the water. We have contacted the Department, Health Department, and we were told that they should have been resolved a long time ago, and we should be able to receive the water. We do not want to fight over water, but we desperately need it. I understand people do not want to pay for water, but it's worth it to receive the benefits of having good water. From what we were told from some of the people in Bearville Reservoir Water, that their water is not any good either, and that they have no water pressure. Some of the people with their own wells can't drink or cook using their water. They take their clothes to the laundromat. Enclosed is a letter that the Bearville Reservoir Water people gave to people before the election. More people may want the water if they receive the correct information and not the information from the Bearville Reservoir people gave. Why should everyone who desperately needs it have to suffer? I feel it's a health issue pertaining to our unsanitary water. We would greatly benefit all of our future generations in years ahead. Please, would you review the votes and reconsider helping our small community who are in desperate need of good water? Do not punish everyone for a small majority. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also Danny Williams.
Dan Williams, 12916 St. George's Lane, Mount Savage. Part of what I had full intentions of saying to you this evening, Terry did a pretty nice job covering. My question, and I checked into this and spoke to a couple legislators about it, was the voting policy that the county uses now. If ballots are sent out to any group, community, or whatever, referring to something that's going to happen in their community or location. This policy was implemented years back when our county did not have the transparency we have now. Simply states that if we send out 50 ballots and 25 come back yes and 17 come back no, the other 16 that didn't come back are automatically considered a no vote. I think Johnny Carson did that when he did the mayonnaise jar with Amazing Cressken. They could read what was in there. Who is to say that those 16 votes that didn't come back were yes, or were no, or even got to the proper addresses? There were a couple, a church and a couple buildings, places, properties, within that community that did not get ballots for it. And thanks to Mr. Roebaker, he went door-to-door and canvassed people and said, "Did you get your ballot? Did you send it in?" Their group got a call from the church, which should be a resounding group of upright people, complained that they didn't get a ballot. And Gary came down and got one and took it back to them and gave it back to them. As Terry mentioned, there are 50 homes, properties, within that jurisdiction for this water line that were eligible to vote for or against it. I was here when they opened the ballots, and Ms. Diane Leibel told us right then and there that the county sent out 58 ballots. Our only question, and not to argue or fight with anybody in public works, or you guys or anybody else, was where did those other eight ballots go to? They had to have been part of the 16 that didn't come back. I asked the first of the week for a copy of the mailing list that went out for 36 Sunnyside and Barrelville, all three, and was told at the time, and I understand this partially, that Paul had them and hadn't got a chance to look everything over yet, so it wouldn't be available. I'm officially asking this evening, under the public information law, that these people who well on deserve this, get a copy of that mailing list so they can see just who it went to. If we sent them to property owners, and there's a, was it Gary, nine up there that rent? If these went to the nine people who owned the property, great. Did they also go to the people who are listed at those addresses as their address because they rent the property? Renters have no say in this. We all know that. All I ask this evening is that you guys, and you can do it, it's your power to be somebody who was here a long time ago, and they're not here anymore, said this is the way we're going to run it. You guys set the voting policy for the county for stuff like this. If you guys say, "We're only going to count the yeses and nos, and the no-shows don't count," that's the way it'll be. Thirty couple... yeses and nos, and the no-shows don't count," that's the way it'll be. Thirty-couple percent of this county voted in November. If we counted everybody who was eligible to vote and didn't, Lord knows where we'd be at right now, because there'd been a whole lot of no votes against a lot of good people. Personally, I just think this is common sense. The folks that Terry mentioned, and she didn't mention the price on it, I will. Told folks it was going to cost them around $400 a month for, or water bills. They showed these people water bills, but they were for residents in Mount Savage. The young lady who did its mother's. She had front footage, sewage, and water for a quarter. That wasn't the water bill. That was the whole package. We just got ours the other day. We've been on its, what, greed last, end of last summer, we got our end of it hooked up. Our water bill, and what's-her-name uses a ton of it, was $23 for the last quarter. You had the $98 regroup, keep it working, and Paul uses to have those folks. Is for up, am I right, Paul? It's for upkeep on the line in the future to take care of it, the 98?
There's a minimum fix here.
Right. Yes, sir.
Operation maintenance.
Yeah, for operation and maintenance, $98. Water actually used was 23. These folks are pumping water out of a trout stream into the wells to feed their homes. Every ounce of potable drinking water they get, they have to purchase. When we talked to Mr. Karski from down the road from MDE, and Chris was up with Bill at the first meeting, and honest Bill and Paul both, I apologize to both of you guys to the way some of those people in that meeting treated you. And they weren't these folks that are begging for money. They need it. They need the water. They talked to the health department. They called Brian at the health department last week and said, "Hey, we need help. We're not getting the water." I said, "Well, we thought that was a done deal." Said, "The only thing missing in that area for the water, for those people, is a little blind guy sitting on the bridge playing his banjo, just like in Deliverance." This is an appellation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, Danny, that's why I kind of deferred to afterwards, because at our 3 o'clock, when we talked to this quite in length, and I'll tell you what, where this all stands since we was all three in agreement, the piece is going to get run down 36. It's, we can't go against the vote right now. And, and I did quite talk to this a little bit about some, a lot of miscues is being going up, up there. I've sat right here, I've asked twice for the people to come and address me. I've had one person out of everybody up there come and address me, and I, and I would love, love to talk to the, the person that's actually putting out the, the wrong facts on this, because that is actually what I do for a living. So I'm going to ask the question. I asked the question of Paul, and I asked the question of Jason today. Any water department that has 15 customers or larger, whether they want to be or not, or a public water system, under whose jurisdiction and authority they operate? And I know they're operating under MDE, but if this is a, is it a legal company? And is it a tax-exempt company? Or what is the actual layout of this company? And I assure you, I'm going to look into this, because there was an allegation that I said that there was going to be 70% approval for this. And I stood right there at Mount Savage and said 60. So when someone flat makes a comment that I didn't say, and want to make it sound like after, see, I've been in the water business since, started with Dad in 73, for quite a long time that I really don't know what I'm talking about when it comes to a water system, I'm ready to cross swords if that's what they want to do, because I don't like what's going on up there. Fair is fair. If they don't want the water, I think all three of us are in agreement, then they don't want it. But don't want it over being told a bunch of lies. So I, I know that we're going to approach pace at getting the piece down 36, and then this will be reevaluated. I just feel bad for the people there that doesn't have good water, because if you, and I'm a firm believer in that, if you don't got good water, you, you don't have nothing. You, you don't have anything. It amazes me, I, I work with it every day, how people will growl and growl and growl about the cost of water. They'll pay $300 a month for a cell phone bill, won't bat an eye, and pay 25, 30, 40 dollars a month for drinking water, and, and they, they think it's a ripoff. And so this is to be continued.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Oh, and the rest of my comments, I didn't mean to get off that much, is if I miss any fire department dinners or things this year, I'm going to have to pull back a little bit coming out of this election season, running for a job and getting a job and keeping the job. I have to spend a little time at home. So if I don't show up at, at someone's banquet, it's no, it's nothing personal. It's just me trying to keep a happy home life, so.
I've been involved with those invitations for 45 years. You guys all get it. And it all says, it says you and a guest. That's the very chief of night out for you.
She's had quite a few of those, though, because she's stood pretty busy this fall, so.
Plus, what we've done, we've taken a look at Creed's recent profile and decided Jake is the one that needs the dinners at the volunteer bar.
As you can tell, I didn't miss nothing from July on in the Troy show.
Well, Matt made a statement a while ago, Jake isn't pure for you, because when you had all those kids up there taking pictures, I leaned up to Matt and said, "This is cool. Jake looks like one of the kids." And Matt turned around and said, "He ain't big enough." Well, you sure come to these banquets. You'll be right here.
They'll put me in as tight end next season.
Hey, thank yous all for coming and speaking your mind on that. I just, again, wish the people that had the problem with this or putting it to non-truce would come right here and address them, or come and see Paul address them, or come and see me and address them. So.
This is something we'll continue to look at, though. Would anybody else that didn't sign up care to speak?
Just a comment on Mount Savage. I'm Kenneth Wilmont, live at 513 Fort Avenue, Cumberland. I think we've got a terrific water system in Cumberland. I've been drinking it for 79 years and I ain't dead yet. So anyway, I think there's a simple solution up here in Mount Savage. Let's just put the stupid water line in with a reservoir up there someplace, and those people want to hook up to it, pay for the hookup. And those that don't, let them go. And if they, in the future, if they want to hook up, they, here's what it's going to cost you. You could have had it at this price years ago, but today you're going to pay your share. These people need water. Let's face it. I've been all over the world. I've seen people walk for 20 miles to get a drink of water. And these people, we live in the United States, they shouldn't have to go down to the creek and get water. We used to do that years ago, but not more today. So that's all I got to say. I think we just go ahead and put the, the line in, forget about it.
Actually, the way the law reads with our funding partners, and especially with USDA, you have to have 51% approval for the community to get funding to go in. We've always liked to think that, that we went a little better than halfway, because it, it always puts the arrows back on the county as a whole. You know, because there's, you can't make everyone happy all the time.
Well, that's the name of the game.
But we can't legally go up, well, if they don't want it, and put it in. We can't do it, so.
You've got a few buzzards up there that just don't see the light.
Well, the other problem we have there, Mr. Wilmont, is if we run that line past your house, and you decide, "I don't want that water. I'm not putting it in my house." That's fine, but you still have to pay a minimum water bill. And so that, that becomes a problem also. And that, that's a state, state requirement. So we're going to keep working on this, on this situation.
I think there should be an easy solution to it somehow. Somebody go up there and bend some ears and...
We're going to keep looking. We'll keep looking.
I sympathize with these people, honestly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, nice short meeting for everybody. Dan?
I have one thing to say, and I'll shut up and get out of your way. A lot of these folks were told it was going to cost them like 1,500 bucks to get hooked up, and there was only going to be three water meters there and section out to fill all that great unit, you know, over on. But what's, everybody did this plan, and I'm not sure it was in your letter or not, I'm looking for my mom telling, that the program that David Nedved is running right now, over 80% of people who live in that area qualify. Husband and wife, two people in the house, make less than $48,000, $46,000 taxable income per year. When they apply through David, they get this run right up to their foundation for nothing. People were led to believe that that's what a lien against their property. It does not. All the agreement they signed says is if you sell the property, five, within five years, you have to pay that money back.
Right.
It's a lien. So you charge the guy that bought your house and that's $500 bucks and you're covered. Need to make sure that he caught everybody up there that owes you. Thank you.
Well, Danny, I, I think you need to go on an educational tour up there, help educate the, the residents in that area, and maybe next time around, the vote will be different.
Mr. Valentine, we did that. We talked to everybody up there we could, along with Gary and them guys, and made phone calls to the folks that said, "Hey, I'm just happening in Mount Savage. Like you guys, get stuck with it." The people that got it up there, that were dead-set against it, are now the best supporters of it. But there were the letters sent to these people that said that I went down there and told them all a bunch of lies about what it was going to be and how it was going to cost. There was a petition run down there by a gentleman and his wife that did put in hours and hours of work for it. And they had 77% of those people said, "We want it." And one lady came forward and told, he got, told all of them, that that man and his wife that did all the work on that petition forged all those names. They weren't real signatures.
Okay.
Run out.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we'll be talking about this again in the future. Our next public meeting will be on January 29th. There will be no meeting next week, because all three commissioners will be in Indianapolis, looking for funding for such things as water lines, sewer lines, and that, and the paste reception. The county government schedule will be, be posted for any holidays, whatnot. Compost site, Christmas tree recycling, you can see the news release. And don't forget the free electronics recycling. I think that's, that's very big. I know I've got quite a few office tires and a couple monitors turning myself. So we hope to see you all again on the 29th. Thank you for coming.